Okay, well, no time like the present.
Time for the present.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, introduction of those present. So far. Someone I don't know is, sir in the back row, I'm Mike Beecher, can you introduce yourself, please?
Certainly, my name is Michael Allen. My wife and I recently moved to Pollitt December. We put Nancy Anderson's house up on Campbell Road and wanted to stay high and let you hear.
Okay, and we had the Zoom meeting with you.
Yeah, his proposal is the one for the municipal planning grant that we'll be talking about tonight.
Okay, sorry, I didn't recognize you.
And online, online tonight, we have Harry and F. Nell. So F. Nell, if you, oh, I'm guessing that's Frank Nelson. But you go by F. Nell now. If you do speak, just be sure to identify yourself.
All right, addition or deletion?
So, um, so Kim Ayers is pre-requested appearance. Not sure if that's already on there, sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Another addition is to discuss the municipal planning grant contract. I figure we could do that under unfinished business or ongoing business. And also, we have to make the appointments for the, for John Sabatka to be our annual Rutland Regional Planning Commission and TAC person, Transportation Advisory Council. So that we could do at some point to maybe unfinished business.
Certainly, so we're good then, huh? Approval of the previous minutes?
There's one edit to older unfinished business of the last minutes. Meg Campbell didn't physically come to visit the town hall and library to give her approval. It was a phone conversation, so I'm just editing the minutes to reflect that.
Thank you.
With that edit, I'll move that we accept those minutes.
Charles. Gotta get my arm.
Favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Didn't hit the papers, not even paying attention to it. Kim, it's all yours.
All right, Michael Bob is going to be familiar with this, but back in 2017 when I started Elizabeth Campbell in West Pollitt, she was in bankruptcy. She went out of it, she went back into it. So in 2017, beginning of 18, Rebecca Reyes contacted us, well, me, and she was going back into Chapter 13, which the board had agreed at that time to accept the payments. But at that time, I didn't know this, and obviously, nobody else did. We didn't file a proof of claim at the time, so basically, what it is, the, it's the paperwork that the town had to file so we could get paid in full. And that never happened, so we have an outstanding balance from 2008 up to 2017 that we have to get basically right off because she is not responsible for it because the town did not do this proof of claim.
So because, and now we can't, we can't file the claim now? Can we file the claim now so we can get what's coming?
She's out of bankruptcy, and this is why this came up. I got a letter saying her bankruptcy was done, but I ever contacted Rebecca and I said, we still have this, a lot of, I mean, it's 1,800 in principal, 3,000 in interest. She paid 2720 total. That was for like three years' worth. But, so from 2008 to 2017, we can't, we didn't file it at the time, which I was never told. Um, I know Judy was.
I don't ever remember seeing anything.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I had emails between John Frasher, because John Frasher was the town attorney at the time, and he was confused because he was like, no, she's out. She wasn't out, she went back into Chapter 13, which she did pay some of it, but we still have this outstanding balance, so. I mean, I can't charge her for it, Rebecca said, I can't bill her, we can't do anything because of this.
Because she was, so then that has to go through a tax abatement, right, John?
I don't know, because Rebecca, she kept, she was adamant, like, you can't bill her, you have to, you can't bill her anything because of this file of proof of claim at the time, but I didn't know about it, Rebecca never told me about it. But, I mean, I thought she would say, hey, make sure you file a claim, but I didn't, I didn't do it. I just, I don't know what to do, but I, I mean, I talked to Julie about it, and I just, I can't bill her anymore for this. She, anything from '17 forward, she has to pay for, which she's pretty much up to date, except for 2021 she owes. So from 2008 to 2017, it's going to be 1,800 in principal.
So that's, that's law, so I just need to understand the right process to make it go away from our books, basically, right?
Yeah, and I gotta, I mean, I talked to Julie, and I'm going to have to call Nemrick and find out how, I hate to say it, like, get rid of it, but it just, I can't bill her.
Judy?
I think, Kim, that you may still have to go through board of abatement, just, just to follow all the steps.
Okay. Yeah, I don't even know.
Do you still use Kevin O'Toole?
Yeah, for the bank, for the, he does the tax sales.
But he might be able to advise you also on the process for.
Yeah, I didn't know how to do it, and Julie didn't know either, so I'm like, I just, I gotta go see the, just figure it out. And when we stopped getting payments and I got that letter saying that she was out, and I'm like, wait, something doesn't seem right here, and it took her, oh, forever to get back to me, and then she finally got back to me and told me this was why.
Is she still on the property? So, so will she?
Yeah, so anything '17 forward, she has to pay, but from where she's, she paid three years in the bankruptcy, so from eight to 17, and she still owes it, but, and it sucks, but, I mean, I had just started, I was never told that we had to file this proof of claim, so.
Right, so that's, that just happened, so now we just got to figure out how to get our books squared away from that and move forward. So you can talk to Nemrick or.
I was going to call Nemrick on Friday, and then Julie, Julie knows all about it, so I got to figure out how to go about it, but like, Judy said, I might just talk to the, see if we just, you know, have them abated, but I don't know where to go. I don't know where to start.
Yeah, either, either that or the VLCT lawyer, one of the two should be able to get us in the right direction.
Okay, just.
I'm pretty sure they're supposed to name us as accretor. If she named us as accretor, we would have got the paperwork from the bankruptcy court.
Which I did. And then I went to the board at that point and said, you guys, are you okay with accepting the payments? And of course, I can't find the emails and the minutes. I went through all the minutes that, from that, that part, and I can't find where the board agreed. Of course, it's all different, but, so it's just shitty deal that we have to deal with.
Now, so now, so now she's out of bankruptcy?
She's out of Chapter 13 now.
So now we got to tell her, she's got to move the building. Right? So now we're going to have to get a hold of the lawyer.
And all that paperwork is in the file in there about that whole, from the beginning when she started?
Okay.
After she purchased it, I, that is in the file, I know that.
I'm going to take one minute and bring Jessica and Harvey, you, Rich, up to speed. Are you aware of that whole deal, John, or weren't you even in?
A little bit, I, I kept my ear, one ear open.
Bill, Bill, the, the train building in West Pollitt that's directly across from the sewer treatment plant is really on the property that belongs to Rails and Trails, correct?
Think so.
I believe they own the property, and they gave us the building to sell, and in the process, we sold the building to her that she needed to move it. But unfortunately, all the information wasn't transferred properly, and the deed, she ended up with the deed to the property, right? Where she was only supposed to get a, a bill of sale. So it made it all murky, and then she went into bankruptcy.
Yeah, she went into, I don't know what the first one was. And then she went back into Chapter 13, so I don't, I don't know how you can go from one to another, I don't know how that works. But the original one, which was before me must be, that, I don't know what chapter it was, but this last one was Chapter 13 where she pays it back, so.
So the whole, the end, the end result is that building needs to be moved off that, off of that property. But it's been going.
Rails and Trails must hold the deed.
What's that?
Rails and Trails must hold the deed to that, is that?
Yes, but it's, it, it got messed up because the deed got signed over to her instead of just a contract for buying the building and moving it, so. But then, before we could even follow through on that, she went into, she, or he?
Sure, she, sure.
She, okay.
She.
Went, went into top 11, and it's been going on almost as long as they've been on the board, so almost 10 years.
Yeah, and then she got out of the first one and then. Very briefly, and then jumped back into another one, so I don't, I don't really know what happened the first round, but I have to see it for the second round.
So we got to do some.
It's just a mess, but I don't know where, like, where I should, like, I guess maybe I should start with the board of abatement, or I, or, well, contact the.
Contact the people first.
And see how to go about this.
Right, and see what we got to do, and then, and then, then we're going to have to work on trying to figure out the next course of action to force her to deal with the building.
Yeah, she hasn't paid her 2021 yet, but if everything's like the 17th, the 8th, we have to.
So she's paying tax based on the value of the building?
It's, her tax isn't very much, it's only.
Boy, that's so gray because.
It's only 65, well, principal's only 4972 for 2021. So I don't know if she didn't pay. Yeah, she must, she only owes 6554 for that year, 2021, so it's not that much, because all the prior years were.
But she doesn't own the land, or she does?
I don't know that part. It says unlanded building, so, it just says 60, unlanded building, so I'm assuming just the building. I don't know that, but I, there is paperwork in the file in there from that whole stuff that happened way before.
It's very gray because who was that guy, Long or something that owned that? Didn't he own that building, he had a little business there for a while? And then he lost it or something? Did he lose it, or did he sell? I think his name was Long.
John Long, maybe, used it for storage, just used it for storage or something. They wanted to get rid of the building, so he had to get his stuff out, we sold it to Elizabeth Campbell, and then, then she filed bankruptcy. But I think there was money owed on the, her property on Cleveland Road, too. Wasn't that?
It's not under, as if it's under her name, she's only, that's the only thing she has is that.
There was, they might have sold that and come out, got the taxes paid off from that.
She took down Bill Morris old barn, too, didn't she, I think? Involved with that.
I don't know about that, but she was involved over by Churchill's up on the hill, the house there, and that was, that was, taxes were owed on that, too, but I think that might have gotten rectified.
She did a lot in taxes, though, like to the city of Rutland, too, at one point, this is what Rebecca told me.
F. Nell is wondering if there is sewer and hookup charge on the property. No?
I don't believe so, I don't, I don't believe there is, because I don't have a, I've only had property for.
So you're going to look into, you're going to talk to people at the state?
Ask Kevin what he wants me to do, I mean, just information that I can go the next step, just to see what Kevin, because it's pretty knowledgeable with this stuff.
Right.
But I've never run into this, so.
And, and see, talk to somebody from the state and see what, see how the right course of action is to, to get this cleared.
Right.
And then we'll start this whole other thing that I just talked about as another, is this whole separate battle, so.
Yep.
All right.
And then Stan Peterson, next week, I'll be meeting with Kevin to, we're sending him for tax sale because he had the abatement, of course, and we couldn't, we had to take him out of the last round, so he is going, it wouldn't be to the beginning of May. Um, and I know last minute, I totally forgot because I hadn't been feeling good, and I contacted Bob, so unless they pay it, then I will have to have somebody from the board there, but I'll let you know the date again. Because that will be coming up for middle, beginning of middle of May, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all you got for today? Well, thank you.
Not good news, but.
It's all news, got to deal with it. Anybody else have any questions for Kim? Well, but thanks for stopping in, Kim.
Sure.
Now, snips? Zoning?
I didn't get anything.
You didn't?
I don't think.
See anything other than.
Did I send anything? No, I, I didn't receive any specific.
Planning commission?
Yeah, I emailed around a report, we met last week, Monday, and I'll just go over the highlights. The planning commission met last Monday, Ed Boe from Rutland Regional Planning Commission was there. He's going to be at most of our meetings going forward because he's working with us on the bylaw modernization grant. Um, we went over the current zoning districts, and we discussed the issues we want to work on in the bylaws update. Notably, we talked about the dimensional and lot coverage requirements, especially in the village and commercial district. We talked about the requirement in the agricultural and rural residential district where you can only have one house per lot. And we talked about a number of the different conditional uses in various districts, about how we might be able to consolidate some of them or broaden some of them. Um, just, it's not in my report, but the general concept behind this bylaw modernization grant is to do some adjustments to make housing more varied and easier for people to do in the different zones. Um, but in addition, we also want to look at some of the conditional uses that have to do with, um, commercial and people being able to have different kinds of businesses. And our general sense as a planning commission is that we want to broaden things up a little bit, to make things easier for people so they don't have as many hoops to jump through to do what they want to do. Of course, we have to keep in mind that we also don't want like a Dollar General coming in or something like that, but we want to find ways to make it easier for people who live here in Pollitt to say, you know, have their property and have their house on it and also their business, which is what lots of folks do anyhow, there just are some, there are some hoops in our bylaws that might be unnecessary. So that's the general direction that we're going in. Um, we also discussed the enhanced energy plan, and we decided that we need to take the time to incorporate a few necessary updates because the state put out their new comprehensive energy plan this year. So we're pretty much nearly done with our enhanced energy plan, but we're going to take a little bit longer to just incorporate a couple new items. All right, um, that's my report. I also do have from Ed Boe, I don't know if this should go in my report, or if we want to do it later when we talk about the other grant, but Ed has sent over the contract for the, um, has sent over the contract for the bylaw modernization grant, which is the one we had the grant for, for 11,250. And this is just our contract with Rutland Regional Planning Commission for that, and it does need a signature of the select board chair. So I don't think we need a motion to sign it necessarily, since we had a motion previously to do this grant. So I don't know if you just are able to.
Yeah, we had a motion to approve the grant stuff, so this is just the contract.
This is just, this is just the contract, and then.
Everybody good with me signing it?
Yeah. And then I'll just get that back to Ed, and then I'll request, go ahead and request the grant funds and get with Julie for paying, because we owe half of it at the beginning and then half again at the end. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, oh, sorry, do you want to do, seems like appropriate timing to discuss the regional?
Sure, let's, let's stay right on all the planning stuff.
Yeah, so every year, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission requests that select boards re-certify the primary and, well, regular and alternate representatives of the Board of Commissioners and the Regional Transportation Advisory Council. So I believe both of those roles are John Sabatka. Um, I don't know if there have, has been any further discussion on alternates.
The alternate is Harley.
Harley?
On both.
I've read that, so.
I thought this was done at the organizational meeting after county.
We did do that then, but we have to do the paperwork for Rutland Regional at this time.
So it just needs the signature, a motion, I think, would be good, and a signature, and then if I could have you to find folks, put your, it needs your street address, email, and telephone number on these forms, so I can.
Oh, you want to do a motion? Need to find a motion?
Might as well, I'll put.
I'm jumping the gun and assuming.
I'll gladly make that motion to appoint both of them.
That, oh, right on it tonight. All right, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, carried. Thank you, gentlemen, for taking on those roles. And that's it for planning commission stuff, and we'll go to the, get the rest of it, the grants and such.
Just under where it says your name.
Under my name?
Yeah, so right here, so your street address.
In Harley.
And then Harley will do the same for us, yeah, street email and phone number.
You need my address?
I want it all, yeah, you, mailing address is good. Actually, it's not a me thing, it's Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Road formans report, I see we got.
Yeah.
Written one.
Hold on.
Would you mind reading it?
Yeah, I just need to write that down.
Sure.
All right, so road formans report. Keith sent over an email this afternoon. And it reads, hello, board members, we have enough going on, so I thought we'd get back to a weekly report. Last week's projects, one coordinate with state AOT to secure funding on the quarry site on Route 153. Met Patrick Wilson to review the site and applied for the Class II Highway Grant. We still need other funding sources for what may exceed $300,000 for this project. Made progress on Herrick Road, this will be priority next week. Pursued availability of materials for summer projects, culverts will be scarce. Next meeting projects, pursue more funding for quarry project, finish the Herrick Brook Road reimbursement, and work on pricing for a new town truck. This needs to be available so we are prepared at tax rate time. Thank you and good night, from Keith.
Do you want to add to any of that?
Well, other than I talked with Perry and Dale, and they've been cutting brush and started grading the roads, but there's still some frost in spots. They've had plenty of spots where they're going to need some more gravel as soon as the frost is out. So other than that, Keith pretty well summed it up.
So what is, what about the, we talked, I don't even know who that guy was we talked to last week.
Patrick.
That was Patrick? So did you, were you able to come up with some kind of numbers, or?
Yeah, so we did have some numbers to submit with that grant application, just to, just to show them in the process that we're going to exceed the, you know, the max of the grant, just so that wasn't in question. And then we can decide from there whether we're going to try and do it with our guys, or, you know, whatever the case may be. But we did put a price with it, yes. So, and it exceeded the cap of the grant.
And that's for the spot by the quarry where the water is on both sides, right? Where that giant buckle is happening?
Yeah. So there was a grant opportunity, and Keith actually filled that out. And I don't know if he submitted that yet or not.
It seemed like it, um, he said he applied for the Class II Highway Grant. I know that's due, I think, on the 15?
That's when we'll know.
Oh, that's when we'll know.
That's when they make the decision, yes.
Oh, all right, we'll know on the 15. Um, so it seemed like he's already applied based on this, so that's good.
Well, that would be good if we can get some money to get that, to finish that road that was not done quite well enough in the beginning. Okay, sounds good, there was, and Deb's a concern from somebody on Wait Hill Road, roadside pruning.
Well, is it within the downtown right of way?
No, I just thought it looked aggressive.
Well, it's going to. Have you been up to see it? I drove over through tonight, and I didn't, and I didn't realize that this had come in, but I didn't, nothing really stuck out that looked, you know, other than the brush cut back out of the road. I thought they were, he's really doing a good job, so.
Yeah, the thoughts that I've been seeing around are looking great.
I think it's time the leaves come out.
Yeah, and the volume that we, the volume of brush that needs to be cut, it's not going to be pretty, you know?
Right.
And it'll be done.
Unpretty for all winter, well, this is a good time.
Yeah.
I think it's good management of their time, too.
Yeah.
It's, it's the only safe, feasible way that we can really do it. You can't put people out there with chainsaws and full saws anymore, it just.
And it's not going to get done.
It's not, it's not an effective way to manage that. Especially when you got to have two people directing traffic for any time you got one foot in the road, you know?
And then this summer, you know, when he's mowing the, the grass, he can go back and tidy things up and.
Just now that we have our own tractor, it's going to be a, a constant improvement. Each year, it's going to keep looking a little bit better and a little bit better. Paul Woodruff told me up in Wells, I think it was three years before they really started to get a good handle on it, before they were starting to get it beat back good, and he says, there was squawking, but it is what it is.
Yeah, we can't be knocking the mirrors off of trucks.
Yeah, I mean, it was, there was a spastic pickup for a dragon.
Yeah.
So that's no good.
I talked to Perry when he was doing our road, and he said half this job is public relations, you know?
Sure.
And he said, if he thinks that there's going to be a problem, he anticipates concern, he'll knock on the front door and say, hey, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, he's been great, so. Yeah, he carries a saw with him, so, you know, around somebody's property, he gets out and makes sure to do a living good job.
Right.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Puts in trouble.
I think if people understand it's a safety issue as far as if people aren't on their side of the road, it, I guess, it'd be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something that we, we have to do, all the different little leaves come in.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so that sounds, and a new truck. What we've been doing in the past is as soon as one gets paid off, we start all over again, so. We're starting to put out some, start to open some discussions on trucks, Rich, or?
I haven't had any discussions with them yet in regards to that, so.
This is the red one?
I think that one that Dale has should be getting paid off this summer, I think. And I think as soon as we get it paid off, we want to start right in with another one, which would put that old green tandem dump truck up for sale.
The International.
Right. I think he's just trying to keep us, keep us on track that, that we need to think about that, and, I mean, you know better than anybody how long it takes to get a new one now, so.
Yeah, and if you can even order one. Hopefully municipalities take precedence, because, you know, right now, if you can even order one, you're well into 2023.
Unbelievable. It's going to cost us $250,000 to put that truck together this year, this time, probably, it was like 180 before, five years ago.
Yeah, I'm sure. And that's at the discounted rate?
Right.
Yeah, just tractors are 200.
Right.
I'm talking about a, one set up in the pile. Hydraulics and a dump box and.
Mill is out, sugar is over. Okay, any.
So I can talk with him about that.
Yeah, just kind of. Just got to get a little signal or a little sense of what he's thinking, and what, how we have to make that. When do we set the tax rate? July, August, right?
August, it's probably closer to, yeah, closer to August.
So we got to have a pretty good ballpark number so we can see what we're going to need in that, for that payment, huh? Okay, that's good that we're got it going, because it'll probably take that long just to get a ballpark so we can see what.
We can find out from Julie when that truck's paid off.
Yeah. So I guess, anybody else have questions? So, I guess, anybody else have questions on the road? Roads, nothing, okay. Assessors, anything from the assessors, John?
Haven't heard anything. I haven't talked to.
Town clerks, would you mind reading Deb's memo?
There are five overweight permits to be signed. There's, Deb has another meeting to attend tonight and may not make it, but will try, and I don't see Deb. There's a concern from Emmett Fiori with regard to the roadside pruning, see service request, service request, and have a good evening.
Okay, so. And we discussed that whole project and stuff?
And Bob, you have the?
Yeah, the permits are all set. Thank you.
So, yes. Treasurer?
There are two warrants this week. The payroll for this period was $9,314.17. Accounts payable is not listed. General fund monies, $15,930.86. Highway is $19,545.83. Waste water, $7,952.81. My apologies, I forgot to include this new wastewater collection breakdown last month after the third collection. Waste water 2021, 2022 levy is 112,860. Adjustment credits, $237.41. Collected by treasurer, $73,089.61, and the remaining is $39,532.98. Motions this evening are for the payroll warrant, which is number 22060, for $9,314.17, and the accounts payable warrant is 22061, for $34,115.33. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack.
Questions or anything? So, we got $40,000 to get, and one more. That's a lot more than one quarter of 112, so.
Well, I imagine there's always some that's still in place.
Anybody want to make a motion for the warrant?
I'll make that motion to approve warrant number 22060, and for $9,314.17, and warrant number 22061, for $34,115.33.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I'm curious if the Plaining Commission is making any difference, and we thought it might alleviate some of the.
Right. I, I think that it is helpful, but it looks like just quite a few people are waiting right till last minute. Anything from emergency management?
Uh, no, he's coming to the next meeting to, um, there'll be three things that will be coming your way through email between now and the next meeting, so it's time for the local emergency management plan, the municipal, um.
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid, and something with, to do with NIMS, which is something that hasn't been, I talked to Bob Morley not today on the phone, and so, the NIMS thing is something that hasn't been addressed in probably like eight years, he said. But three things coming down the pipe for next time. Nothing for tonight.
Okay. This is his appointment of deputy. Okay. Okay, so now we're into.
Health officer.
That's it. Now, it's going to be at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And the health officer, did Jennifer have anything?
Yeah, so Jennifer's online this evening, but she asked if I could share a report. One, there was an anonymous call about possible burning of garbage in the next few days at an address on Route 30. I spoke with both the owner and the tenant, who denied any plans to burn trash, no further reports, and I am not aware of any burning having been done. Two, a citizen of Pollet called to report that his dog had become severely ill after eating rotting meat left outside a freezer at a nearby residence where the tenant had recently died. I spoke with the owner of the residence and followed up a week later. She told me that the problem had been rectified, no further complaints related to this. Have a great weekend.
All good with that? Waste water treatment. I think we had another pump go down and, up in Spruce Gum. I did give her a, a place in Troy Pump Service, so she got ahold of them, they came up, picked the pump up that we had, the spare pump, to take to be evaluated, hopefully rebuildable. And she asked them to try and, you know, rush it the best they could, and I haven't heard any of them back. That was sometime last week. So, we're, West Pollet's running on just one pump right now.
And it's keeping up?
Yeah, basically, the two pumps are just alternate. One pump will do the job, but what they do is they alternate them back and forth, or in the event that one fails, we have redundancy, so. Yeah, when we had that water coming in, that really, that stressed them, because they ran steady for many days in a row. And other than that, I don't think there hasn't been much more about any of the.
Did you get the email I forwarded you from that gentleman who was with that nonprofit?
I did.
That we met with? Yeah, it was, the gist of it was basically, I had sent him, he had wanted me to send him the info on how much ARPA funds we had. And so, I did that, and then he wrote back and said that he'd been in, um, I'd have to look at the email to be certain, but, um, I think that he said the, the study that we had done wasn't quite the study he thought it was.
Oh, right, right.
It was like a preliminary study, so, we might have to do another step more than what he thought we had to do.
The next step to be, to be prepared, okay.
Right, yeah.
That's right, I, I read it when you sent it to me, and then it's kind of escaped me, so.
Yeah, but that's, that's all I've heard.
That's the gist of it. Okay, thank you. And so, we're, we keep, we're in contact with him, so hopefully we can find some type of alternative to, to make it a better, better deal over there. I guess we're onto older unfinished business, town hall repairs.
Yeah, I, before we really got into each repair, I wanted to get a catalog of all the things that need done, so we can somewhat put a priority on those. And so, I think I've got a list of, of ones, so that was the first step. I also wonder whether it'd be good to have a, on our agendas, have a, a report for just facilities, and then whoever's involved with the facility can, in other words, right after wastewater, have a, have a Sub J. For facilities.
Well, there's almost always something regarding facilities.
So, if you, like, we do that with the Historical Society on a much smaller scale, but it's helpful to concentrate on one thing.
That's probably a very good direction to go with that.
But these are all continuing problems, nothing really new. We did, I had an emergency call, the toilet upstairs was overflowing today, but the countryside alarm boy put the fire out himself. So, that's taken care of. But we'll go down this and put, sometime have a, within our budget of, I think, $17,000, I think we had for building, see what our priorities are.
If you want to add that as a standing item to the agenda, I think maybe a motion. Because isn't the agenda set during the, um.
I mean, certainly.
The board agrees on the structure of the agenda.
If you think we need a motion, it would be just as easy to do it, so.
I think just to be safe, if that's okay.
So, John will make that one, too?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. That'll be good. Thank you, John. Oh, Harley?
Although it's not town hall, I just came from a library board meeting, and they, the chair indicated while they're waiting to hear from the select board about the front steps.
Yeah, that's on the news.
I don't know if there's been any action or if there's a plan.
Have you had?
Heard from that guy, Bob?
I've reached out to Steve twice, and I have not heard any responses of, of his ideas or anything, if, and I'm going to. Basically, confront him, if he can't, if he can't help us or work with us, then I'll find someone else that, that can.
You will, or just?
I will, yes.
Judy?
Do we still have the building fund?
Yes, that, that fund still gets, right, yep.
And on the library topic, it's not the front steps, but I did get a message from, uh, Matt, I'm going to probably mispronounce this person's last name, Matt Levitra, who says that he is the person who keeps the ramp clear of snow and ice, and has been doing that since 2015. And he wanted to meet with me to give me, since he, he heard us talking on the last select board meeting about the ramp, and he wanted to give his perspective on the snow and ice situation on the ramp. So, I, I just messaged him and said that I would meet with him, it would be fine, and I'll let you know, well, no, I guess, Bob, you're not on facilities anymore. John, I'll let you know when he says that, but if, if you're not available, I can just talk to him, it will be fine.
I know, no, he's my tenant over in my town.
Oh, okay, you know, how do you pronounce his last name?
Levit.
Levit, okay, no R, R is silent, got it.
It's spelled with an R, but it's not pronounced.
It's probably French. But, yeah, so I can, I can get his perspective on what he thinks about the snow and ice situation on that ramp.
Okay.
So, I kind of assumed that we were talking about the library, but I see it says town hall repairs.
Because that was last meeting, Julie came to the board with a list of interior items for the town hall, yeah. Um, yeah, egress, front door, and.
Well, this is what I wanted to put, situations like that in context with other things we've got going on.
So, that's, that's a great, that's a great idea, John, so we're, this is in process, that it hasn't, we, we didn't, we're not just kicking the can, we're establishing a group of, of issues.
Some things, you know, I'd be fixing a outside door in the wintertime, if you can avoid that type of thing. Nothing to say qualifies for looking into.
Is there any more repairs to discuss?
We have a constant problem with the, the elevator, in the sense, we've got different inspectors, and we've got different, trying to tie down who's in, who's to do what, and Sue will normally tell me what's mine. But there's batteries that run the telephone in the elevator, so if you were stuck there, they've got to, they have to be on a schedule of replacement. And things like that that happen, our light bulbs that, you know, people don't know when they sign up for being a select board, it's just, how many select board members can change the light bulb? I think. But things like that, so if we can get a pattern of who, who watches the fuel tank if it's not on, you know, not on automatic fill or something.
I have a question, actually, speaking of elevator, do we, can you remind me of the date? I need to set a reminder in my phone, so we can get off of Schindler's List.
Okay, yes. Okay, I can get that to you.
Literally, because I think it's not for like two years, or isn't it for?
It's at, at least a year.
Yeah, it's like something, but we need to send them notice, you know, some funny timeline, and I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, they had an automatic renewal.
Yeah, and so, I just, I was thinking about that the other, I, you know, thinking about middle of the night, and I was like, I have to remember that. But I think it would be good, I can set a reminder, and that way we can know that we can write it all out and get off of that, so we only have one elevator inspector.
Local Cannabis Control Board. I was just checking.
Oh, perfect for the topic.
I was checking an email.
I, I, if I might, I, I did go and look at the, whoever it was who sent us around that link, I went and looked, you did, thank you. I went and I had a look at that link, and I can, I can just give a little summary of what I noticed and what I thought, and then if anyone else wants to chime in, please go ahead. But, um, so currently, there is a State Cannabis Control Board, which issues licenses to all cannabis businesses, and they're still in the process of getting this up and going. It looks like they won't be issu, they're starting in the spring to issue licenses to growers, and then by the fall, they're going to be issuing licenses to retail stores. So, this retail store in our town that is going through the zoning process, or has gone through the zoning process right now to get their, through the DRB, will have to get a license from the state. And the license from the state requires this number of things, including, there are buffer zones 500 feet from schools, so the state won't license a cannabis is placed within 500 feet of a school. There is an excise tax of 14%, which unfortunately municipalities currently are not getting any of that, but they're trying to change that, the legislature might change it this year. And there are certain requirements that the State Cannabis Control Board will do before doing the license, which are having to do with security. I remember the DRB said something about people being concerned about security and about various rules. The state does have a number of rules in place regarding security, rules about age and not letting people who are underage in, and rules about tracking the products, so making sure that there isn't theft or loss of the cannabis products. Um, there also is a, the state has a complaint system, so if like a local person were to have an issue with a retail cannabis place, they could, um, they could message the state complaint system, and it does also, the state looks at the environmental impact. So, that's the state. Localities can, as, as the DRB told us, localities can make a local cannabis control commission, and as we suspected last time, the people on it may be the members of the legislative body, just like the liquor control board, so we could be the cannabis control commission. We would then, the town would issue and administer local control licenses. There could be a local fee which was charged. Um, the rates are being considered this legislative session, so they haven't nailed down the rates, but they're thinking it'll probably be like $100 or so for a local license. If a local license is required, the business has to get the local license before the state license. So, the state place will look at, is there a local cannabis control board, and if there is, they'll say, did you get your license from this, from your locality, and if they didn't, the state won't give it to them. We can't put a lot of conditions on the local license, like we can't ask them to do all sorts of other stuff that other businesses can't, don't do. We can condition the local licenses on compliance with zoning bylaws, which they've already done by going to the DRB, and sign regulations and nuisance regulations, so we can, we can, we can deal with those, but we can't make other conditions on it. Yeah, and there's already, I know, another thing that some folks had brought up at the DRB was they were concerned about people consuming cannabis, like in various places. There's already state law, cannabis may not be consumed in any public. like in various places. There's already state law, cannabis may not be consumed in any public place or place of public accommodation, and stores do count as places of public accommodation. So by the state law, folks will not be able to consume cannabis in the retail store. Now, if they do anyhow, then somebody can complain, right? Um, so that's, that's the information I got, um, from this website. I, my personal thought is, we probably should just go ahead and make a local cannabis control board, then we can get, they'll do the local licenses. It'll be a little bit of paperwork for us, but there'll be a small fee involved, and it'll just give us another modicum of control over this issue. And I think the DRB had kind of asked us if we might do that, and I, I think it's worth doing. That's my thought.
So I read through that, and, and I, I came up with the same things you were coming up with, but I didn't, I, I tried to find any like guidance for any kind of control board, and I really didn't find anything.
There isn't yet, and I think it's 'cause it's so new. They're not even issuing the licenses yet, and, well, I guess April, sometime in April is when they're first accepting people to apply. And like I said, they're not giving out the ones for stores until later. So I think there, I think there isn't any yet. It did say that if you make a local cannabis control commission, you have to let the state board know, but there's no form for it or anything.
Right, it's, right.
It's completely new, is what I'm thinking, yeah.
But it did seem, it did seem like a, a, a good way for us to, to make sure that everything was, was thoroughly investigated on our side before it made it to the next level, that it conformed with, that our local going and, and everything else.
It would seem like we would go, if we were the, the local control board, we would go by a recommendation from the DRB. Would that seem appropriate?
Absolutely. I was just hoping that, that there was something, there was just a little bit of martial about any, any already established local control boards, or I didn't hunt very hard, but I didn't find any.
Well, it's things like only cannabis products can be sold there, not gum or chips or...
Unless, of course, they are also infused with cannabis.
And I don't think that at the local level we can make those rules. I think those are made at, at the state level.
Okay.
Yeah, the laws, the rules that we can make have to do with that they comply with our zoning bylaws, that they comply with any local laws about signs, which we do have some, um, stuff in the bylaws about signs, and that, and the nuisance regulations, which are in the state statute. And though, honestly, the nuisance regulations would seem kind of broad, but, so we would just have to make sure that they complied with that.
But do we want to go ahead and, and establish that right now, or do we wanna look into it a little bit more?
I mean, just having the board be the, the Select Board be in.
Yeah, I, I think that the Select Board, we would sign off, just like we do the, the liquor licenses, seems like.
I feel like they're doing it in very similar way to how they do liquor control. I mean, it sounds like it's very similar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor of the Select Board being, let's see, I guess.
The Cannabis Control Commission.
The Cannabis Control Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Frank has a hand raised, if, and, when you're ready to open up questions.
My, my only question here would then be, who's going to inform the state board that we have made one?
I can, will you? I, I, um, was there a contact?
I don't remember, but there must have been. I'm sure there was a contact.
I think somewhere on that, there was a whole bunch of, of breakouts that you could look up, other state rules and stuff. That was kinda cool that you could click on some.
Yeah, it's a good site.
When they were talking about the things you could and couldn't do, and thought you could click on highlighted portions, and it would bring you right to the state statutes that explained it, so.
I will do that.
Uh, the, the only other thought that I had about this was, knowing that some people at the DRB, um, hearing were concerned about things like people consuming cannabis in public locations, it might not be bad if we, I don't know how we would make this known, but maybe, maybe in the e-blast, or maybe, um, post something here in the Town Hall, just to, to let folks know that there are rules already, that people can't consume cannabis in public locations, just so that they know if someone is doing that, it is against the law, and they can complain about it. 'Cause it seemed like that was a concern that people had. So, yeah.
My thought might be, once it gets a little bit more established, there could be a section on the website, as there are for all of our other different little boards and...
With the regulations.
Yeah, with a link to regulations, and that way there can just be a resource page that we can refer people to. Because it, it does, I got the same gist, that it seems like a lot of it at this stage is state regulated, but it's giving, this local commission is giving the municipalities an opportunity to just have a little extra awareness and understanding of what's happening, so.
And I'm sure that as more towns make these, there will be more best practices and like
Definitely.
helpful, helpful information for us, yes.
Any more discussion on cannabis control?
Frank?
Um, question?
Go ahead, Frank.
I think that the Planning Commission should ask Ed Boeb about this, 'cause he's working with us on the bylaws, to see what from our end we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Municipal Planning Grant.
All right. The Municipal Planning Grant Committee met, uh, I think it was last week, and voted to advance the proposal, um, by Michael Allen's organization, am I getting it right, Regrowth?
Regrowth.
Regrowth, um, to advance that to the Select Board. So the, the committee, um, asks the Select Board to approve this particular proposal, which I forwarded around to everybody, um, regarding the West Paulette Village Center Master Plan. So we thought that, we thought that Mr. Allen's proposal was a good one, and he is local. A lot of, a lot of folks on the committee were pleased that he'll be able to come in person and do like a little walking tour of West Paulette and speak to people in person. And, yeah, so we, we suggest that this be the proposal that the Select Board go with. And Mr. Allen is here in person to answer any questions tonight, or to, I don't know if you, there was anything else you wanted to say?
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure I made myself available. If you guys have any questions, um, obviously, we still have a little work to do to tidy up how this might work, but I wanted to be available.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion to, uh, accept?
Sure, yes.
Move to the next?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll...
Next step?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the Select Board, um, accept the proposal by Regrowth.
Have a second on that motion?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And his motion, his, his proposal came in with the grant, with the grant max, so that we weren't, you know, he didn't go over the grant funding and stuff like that.
It's the correct amount. And the next step is that, we're working on a contract right now. Um, I'm running, uh, Michael has sent a contract in, and I'm running it past Ed Boeb, because there are certain state grant requirements, and he's just gonna double-check it for any necessary language regarding that. Once that comes back, um, we'll, we'll hash out any necessary things that Ed says, and I assume that probably two weeks from now, that contract will be in front of the Select Board to sign.
Good, thank you. Is there anything else under old or unfinished business? Judy?
Yeah, we were just wondering if anybody was able to find out anything about the green.
I was able to find out one thing, and another thing I do not yet have an answer for you on. I do not have anything from VLCT yet, but I will continue to, um, to try to get hold of that. I did look into the town plan and looked through it for language about the town green. Uh, the town green is mentioned once in the town plan. It just mentions that it's there in front of the library. Yes, and there is no language regarding it being an open space or anything like that. There is some language in the town plan about us wanting recreational land, but it doesn't talk about the town green specifically. So I think that, um, for your, for the concept of protecting the town green, um, a good step would be in the next town plan that we make to update some language about the town green. Um, the town plan will be updated largely by the Planning Commission, and the next year it will be updated is 2024. So I assume that the work on that will begin next year in 2023. So that would be a good time to make sure to attend some Planning Commission meetings and just, I mean, I'm assuming I'll still be on the Planning Commission, but, you know, just to...
And the Select Board.
And make sure that, and make sure that the people on the Planning Commission know that this is something people in the town care about and would like to see this language put into the town plan. So that, that's, that's my...
That's probably gonna be the most effective way to, to keep that.
Yeah, and again, there, like, there might be something we can do statutorily, but I haven't heard back from VLCT. So I will, I will have more report on that in the future.
Right, thank you.
That's good, thank you. You had quite a lot of work this past meeting time, didn't you?
Well, you know, I, I missed a meeting while I was on vacation, so I had to catch up for lost time.
Got loaded right down.
Love that.
What's up with the property? When do we discuss the property in West Paulette?
Oh, so that's still up for auction.
When does, when does, when does the auction close?
I think we've got one day, right? Isn't it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I looked yesterday or something, it was at forty-seven.
It's up to seven, it was up to seventy-three, so.
Oh, really?
This af- early this afternoon.
Total cost of like fourteen?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen. We're gonna have to discuss that. If it doesn't reach that, you know, what we're gonna do.
We don't have to make any decisions tonight?
No, not till we get, not till the big closes, and then we can refuse it if we're not satisfied.
We can, that was one question that was around. And the second question, whether we can extend it?
Uh, I think we'd have to, I don't, I don't think so. I can ask Dave, but I don't think that we can.
Okay. And there was a third one. What the third one was, people have asked me about, I didn't have, I'll think of it tonight.
And I can ask, uh, Dave that question tomorrow, because they did make a mistake as far as, uh, advertising. It was hard to find for the first week.
Right.
So we called them out on it, and he had to make some changes, and now you can actually find it.
I know what it is. Minimum bid. We didn't have a minimum bid, and...
We had talked about putting that in there, but if everybody had to start at the, you know, at that high number, we may not have gotten any bids.
Right, couldn't I do?
And just before I came to the meeting, it was up over eight thousand.
Oh, cool.
And usually, I mean, the bidding.
Those last, bitter moments.
Everyone's sitting there with their finger on the button.
And that'll be tomorrow. Usually the last, you know, four or five hours is when it gets really active.
I guess they can set up, I never got into that at all, but I guess people that do it a lot, you could set up with a, with a cap, and it'll keep watching, automatically keep, keep jumping till it gets to your cap and stuff like that, I guess, the hardcore guys.
Pretty cool.
Well, they have that for antique cars or hot cars.
Really any old thing.
Even catalogues, I think, yeah.
Everything is that way now. You don't, you don't own a car just 'cause you sneezed or anything like that nowadays, John.
That's right, you wouldn't scratch your arm and, whoop. As Bussmeyer used to say, "I'll tell you when to quit."
Okay, any new business? John?
I have some, uh, questions. At last, uh, Thursday's TAC meeting at, you know, for the Rutland Regional Commission, I asked Devin Neary, uh, what the status was on the pedestrian Paulette project. And he said that he had met with the consultants a few days prior to last Thursday's meeting, and I'm not sure who he contacts from the board or, or what.
I get those emails, and John gets those emails.
Oh, you did?
We did, about their presenting the alternatives.
Mm-hmm, I just got that today.
It was late afternoon, I think, yeah.
I can forward that to you, though, John. Would you like to see it?
Please, because I'm...
Sure.
Kind of, whenever I go to these meetings, I'm kind of, uh, not in tune with what's going on, okay? The other is the, they keep on talking about getting, um, the request in for money to do roads and so forth. Now, who, who does that, okay? Who is the person that sends the information to the Regional Commission on what roads and how much it's gonna be and requesting money? I don't know who's responsible for that.
So, so Keith Mason always grappled with that, that's my understanding. Uh, and he is, he's helping us with that right now as well. So hopefully he continues to, that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Kristen's been...
I've also danced with it. I've also dipped my toes in.
Okay.
Um, I think, my understanding is that item that they brought up about the upcoming deadline, that was the funding that has, was previously discussed for one fifty-three.
Okay.
Which is my understanding that, and I can double-check with Keith tomorrow, but my understanding is that Paulette has already submitted our interest in that pod, for, for that program, that Class Two, was it the Class Two roadways, I believe?
Probably, yes. I know that, uh, they keep on talking about, you know, there's gonna be a lot of money available for bridges, okay? More so than roads. And, um, you know, I know Paulette is not on the bridge list, okay, for repairs. I mean, it's, you know, there's a number of them in other towns, but nothing in Paulette. So I just assume that Paulette is not gonna attempt to get money to repair any bridges.
Well, the state did came down, and they recommended that we apply for the Structures Grant for this project filling in the road.
Okay.
So it's a Structures Grant. So I would assume that maybe that's the, along the lines of the Bridge Grant? Or is it specifically a bridge? What's the difference between a bridge and Structures?
Okay, they tell, I, I have been told that any culvert that's over thirty-six inches, I believe, or maybe thirty-six and up, qualifies for a Structures Grant.
Okay.
Okay? You know, you know, twelve or twenty-four inch or whatever, no, no money there unless it's within a road repair, okay? But, um, I just would like to have a little more information when I go to these TAC meetings, so I can, you know, push, uh, them for funds or ask the status of what the funds are and so forth. So if I could have some contact on that, I would really appreciate it. Yeah. You know, and actually Keith is my neighbor, but, you know, I know the situation, and I'm not about to try to bother him at all, so that's that, okay?
Yeah, Keith has always done a fantastic job.
Pardon me?
Keith has always done an excellent job with...
Oh, he has, he has, definitely, yeah.
So, um, maybe Kristen, when we're working on some of this stuff, you can keep John in the loop as, as we apply and stuff like that, so you know more what's going on and what to be hounding them for and such like that, or as we, you know.
I mean, you know, the, the TAC board is kinda made up between some road commissioners, some, um, you know, planning people, uh, the Select Board members, so there's a, a mix of representatives in that league and, and in that group. And I always thought that, you know, the road commissioner is really the best one to be there for the road formal and whatever it may be, but, you know, I'll do my best.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else, or are you good? Those three or two? No other new business, anyone has?
Um, I have, I guess it's kind of an announcement or new business. Um, so I can officially announce now that, um, the towns of Paulette and Rupert... Um, so I can officially announce now that, um, the towns of Paulette and Rupert have been awarded the Volret grant that we applied for last fall. We were awarded, um, partial funding. So we didn't get the full amount that we asked for, but we did get, we got the funding for resurfacing all of the parking lots for the Vale Trail, both the ones in West Paulette and the ones that are in Rupert, and putting up some additional signs about parking and no parking, both in West Paulette and in Rupert. Um, we had asked for money to convert that building into a welcome center, and instead we got money to do a feasibility study about the building. So we have yet to find out exactly what the details are on what that feasibility study is going to contain and what the next steps forward would be. I've met with, um, through Sir Jane, who owns the building, to see where he's at. And so there's going to be a little bit of a go-around to see whether, whether we, that's a thing we want to do, if we want to do the feasibility study or not. They also, um, want to give us some funds in order somewhere near the trail to put in, um, some portable toilets. So those are the, because we had said, one of the reasons for the welcome center was to put in public bathrooms. So those are the things that they want to fund from our grant, and so I think, I think it's a win for us, though we aren't entirely sure exactly what the steps are with this welcome center, but we'll, we'll see, and I'll, uh, it was just announced last week, there was a press release. So now, I, I knew earlier, but I couldn't officially tell the world. So now, yes, we have, we have been one of the people who got that grant. So good for us, and we'll see when there's more information, I'll bring more information.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anything else on the new business? Does there, anybody have any public comment?
This is Frank.
Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, on the, um, the Railroad Depot building that was discussed before.
Right.
Uh, I believe one of the questions was that, that, um, that it might need to have a fee even without a sewer hookup. I don't know if you've moved forward with billing for the sewer fee to that building.
Yeah, I think because it, because it's not supposed to be there, I think that's how it all went. It has to go away, so that's a whole, that's a whole different can of worms here. But it may very well have had it. I, I, without, without looking into it, I, I can't remember for sure if that building had a, if someone was getting charged for a sewer hookup or not.
The old Don Bush building, didn't that get charged a fee?
Yes, it did.
There wouldn't be no, any difference, I don't think, between the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. But except for the, the big depot building belongs to the state.
So they're not going to pay it anymore.
Basically, so. Because of the fact that it, it's, that's just gray. With it being on land that belongs to the state, it needs to go away. So...
Sounds like we need to move it.
It's supposed to happen, that's what she was supposed to do. If we could get money to buy it, move it up there where Felix's garage was, that'd look cool up on top of the hill, wouldn't it?
Make a nice welcome center.
Yeah?
Yeah, Spark.
Uh, question about the, the railroad, uh, railway building in West Paulette. Uh, where does it have to move? I mean, uh, is there any location in particular, or it just has to not be there?
It was supposed to not be there. This, this was all kind of happened before I even got on the board. It was all kind of in process, and that was like ten years ago. And it was determined that that building was part of the D and H, so it ended up getting reverted to the state rail trail with a D and H property, and we were supposed to sell it as a building to be removed. And, but then the...
So it's not just a matter of it needs to be moved off of a, a property?
No, it has to go away. There's no place right there, that's all D and H, old, old D and H property there.
The state wouldn't have any interest in, uh, using it to support the rail trail?
They didn't at that point, but I don't know that that conversation's not worth revisiting.
Okay.
It's kind of a cool building, it's a little...
Yeah, I, I caught my eye, and, uh, I thought it would be a useful thing to have along the trail, potentially. Uh, so maybe that's something, I just trying to get a little background here.
Sure, it, it certainly could be re, revisited, you know, I mean, the attitudes and stuff like that could change with, with different people that change. It may, may very well, I mean, it's, once we cut the overhang off on the, the sewer side, it made it much easier to get through, but it had a very long overhang, what was it, three, four more feet?
Oh.
So you couldn't only get about one truck by it, stuff like that. So that's why that was all trimmed back. And other than that, it...
I think the lady wasn't the business of maybe not reconstructing the actual building, some other location, but using those materials for...
Oh, yeah.
For reconstruction and, and other things. I think that was the situation down at the Moore Farm.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was just the back stable there.
Right, and they just took what they wanted and left the rest, right?
There was some problem there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, comments?
Uh, Frank, again, could you clarify, if the building still stays there, wouldn't there be a sewer fee, and the state cannot wiggle out of that sewer fee?
That seems like, I, I don't know. It, it's certainly, the conversation, if the building ends up staying, it would certainly be part of the conversation. So, right now, there's a lot in the air, and as we kind of finalize, figure out what, how we're going to handle this and move forward, um, the sewer fee is definitely a, a very high priority in that town, so no one should be able to wiggle out of a sewer fee. Thank you for that, Frank. Have I made a motion to adjourn? I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.